We're gonna get our meeting started. Sorry, I'm a little late here. Today is Tuesday. I can't even read my... This is February 18th. Is it 18?
Eighteenth.
Twenty twenty-five, and we're gonna get started for the Revere Board of Education meeting. Ms. Arbogast, you're filling in for Mr. Berdine. Will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Mrs. Brackett, here. Mr. Hidu?
Here.
Mr. Malik?
Here.
Mrs. Rainey?
Here.
Mrs. Stein?
Here.
All right, we have Mrs. Keizer will be introducing a couple of our students to lead us in the pledge.
Sure, thank you, everyone. So while we were waiting, we had a few students that are here to lead us in the pledge, but they were asking great questions about how often this meeting happens and what the role is of the Board of Education, how many board members there are. So we got a little lesson up here as we were, as we were waiting for a few minutes. So we have Charles Chow, the second grader from Mrs. Yoder's class. You can stay where you are, sweetheart. And then we have Ellie Ginter, and she is a kindergarten student from Mrs. Harrig's class. So they are gonna lead us in the pledge. If you would please stand up and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Good job.
Thank you, everyone, and they're gonna get their picture taken. So, parents, if you wanna come on up and get some pictures too, you are welcome to do so.
Yes, good job. Thanks for leading us. You did a great job. Am I blocking you?
No, you're good.
Karen's getting on, Stan. Oh, one more. Did you get it, Karen? Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna continue with presentations. I'll have Mr. Frye from Bath introduce his students.
All right, good evening. We're excited to be recognizing four students from Bath this evening. I'm gonna ask Jenny Jacoby, one of our amazing fifth grade teachers, to join me and talk about two of her students. Would Hadley Apodol and Zoe Ross come up and join us, please? Hadley and Zoe, come on up.
All right, so I'm gonna start with Hadley. I had to write notes, cuz I get nervous. All right, so I wanted to recognize Hadley because of her kindness and empathy. Like, she is a child that embodies kindness and empathy. And I think for kids at an elementary level, it's a very difficult thing for them to understand what empathy is. So, for example, if someone's absent, she will just go right over and make sure that they understand what they've missed. She's calm, she's kind to everyone, adults, students. She just, she just has a natural way of understanding how to help them. And it, it's something that I noticed about her right away, but it is something she does every day without effort. And I'm really proud of her for being that way. It's, it's a really difficult thing, I think, for a kid to understand, and she totally gets it. So, congratulations. All right, Zoe. Today's Zoe's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
I know. So she's off to dinner after this. So in social studies, we study economics, and in the unit we discuss entrepreneurship, profit, how to spend money, save money, and invest money. And Zoe has her own business. And she has showcased it, her art products, at two different events. The first one was a Kids Maker Fest 2024 at the Akron Art Museum. And then she also was at the Common Ground in Medina, which were both shows for young entrepreneurs. And because of that, I thought it would be fun for her to share her business with the class and, and give, you know, them an idea of what that's like to have your own business for kid, because not a lot of kids can run their own business and know what to do with their money. And it's something that I'm, I'm proud of her for sharing, because that's not always easy to do. And I love that she's showcasing it at different events for kids. So, congratulations for that.
All right, very good. I would also like to ask Natalie Miller and Luke Estraski to come up. Now, Mr. Wilson and I had the pleasure of working with Natalie and Luke as our principal and assistant principals of the day. They won this incredible honor at the Revere Schools Foundation illuminate fundraiser. Luke and Natalie worked incredibly hard with us throughout the entire day. They were able to go on behind the scenes toward the building, seeing everything from the mechanical room with all the water pumps and the massive air handlers up in the attic. They helped us do some investigative work using our many cameras throughout the building. It was pretty cool, wasn't it? The kids took pictures throughout the day and documented their adventures in a slide presentation they shared with their parents. Natalie and Luke are awesome kids and will hopefully wanna be principals when they grow up. And look at them, they look like principals right now. Don't they look great?
Congratulations, Zoe. Happy birthday.
All right, Mr. Conley and Mrs. Ellis for our middle school.
Yeah, come on up. Uh, well, so we have two middle school students we wanna introduce to you and talk a little bit about. Ms. Ellis, one of our main office secretaries, is gonna introduce our first student.
I actually wrote a whole speech, so you'll have to bear with me. Good evening. My name is Amy Ellis, and I am a secretary at Revere Middle School. I am here this evening as I nominated an eighth grader Kylie Thompson to be part of the student recognitions. I began my time at the middle school at the start of the 23-24 school year, so that is when Kylie and I first met. Being a middle school student today is not easy under the best of circumstances, especially with the way our world is today. I can't even imagine having social media and society always pressuring my decisions. The first few times that Kylie and I met were not under the best of conditions, as Kylie was not making good choices in middle school. During that year, I was able to get to know the real Kylie. We would have numerous conversations during her time in the office, and I could see through the tough exterior that she was trying to portray. Kylie is a very good person and has so much to offer Revere local schools. But I also think she has a lot of good to contribute to the world in the future. Kylie is caring, intelligent, funny, and always on trend. Kylie has done a lot of reflection and self-improvement over the last year, and it really shows. When I think of the vision of a Minuteman, I see Kylie as really modeled herself after several key points. She engages with purpose. I have seen Kylie meet new students in the office and take them to their lockers in their first period classes without even being prompted by an adult. When she's asked to run an errand for the office, she happily accepts. She's also very polite and considerate. She perseveres and adapts and creates solutions. Kylie came to me when she missed the tryouts for the eighth grade cheer squad. She was very upset about not being able to have a chance to try out for the squad, even after speaking with the coach. After we talked, she was able to come up with a solution that worked for her. She ended up trying out for the a cappella group and became a part of that program. While that might not have been her original plan, she made a new plan and seems very happy with the group. She embodies confidence and empathy. I have watched Kylie speak to students, some that she doesn't even know, when they seem upset or lost. She provides them with a student's perspective on how to solve problems. She demonstrates a learner's mindset. Kylie has not only joined the a cappella group this year, she is also a table washer, part of the principal's advisory committee, and a member of the mentee program. She was also named Student of the Month for January. Being an involved student definitely makes you more well-rounded and gives you a sense of purpose. I have also seen Kylie make strides in her academics this year. She is part of the tutoring program and actually gets excited when her assignments are completed. While I'm sure there's room for improvement in her academics, she is certainly making progress in the positive direction. Kylie, I hope this nomination is something that you can be proud of. I hope you can use this as a positive reinforcement that you need to keep yourself on the wonderful path that you have created for yourself. While it is great to get the latest tea in school, and for those of you that are not middle schoolers, that means the gossip, or what the latest fashion trends are or are not, or what the latest slang words were, or the fact that you actually think I'm in my thirties, or all of the TikToks that we talk about or make me be a part of. Kylie begged me to be in a TikTok, so I finally gave in. I told her it would be the only one I would ever be seen in. I was secretly crushed when we didn't go viral, because I gave a solid sixty percent in my performance. What is important is that you know that you have so much potential, and I have learned so much from you as an adult. I look forward to the end of my day when you come into the office and visit me, and I am honored that you choose me to walk out of school with you almost every day. I am so proud of you. Please know I am gonna be here for you even behind, beyond middle school years. Congrats, Kylie, and keep up the good work.
Great job, great job. Uh, the student I'm introducing is Brayden Esplin. He's a seventh grade student. Brayden, if you wanna come on up here, please. Brayden embodies the vision of the Minuteman. He always engages with purpose. Look at this young guy. He's probably got a smile on his face. He's always pleasant, smiles, looks you in the eye when he speaks to you. He is one of the few students at the middle school. When he addresses a principal, he doesn't look away like he's gonna turn to stone whenever I answer their questions. So he's always looking me in the eye and having great conversations when we have the opportunity to. I did get a chance to observe a teacher today, and he was in that class, and I was very anxious to see how he interacted in the classroom. And just as I anticipated, he's a leader amongst his group. He was raising his hand, first answer questions, always be called on, usually with the right answer, and he always engages with purpose in his classroom as well. Brayden also embodies confidence and empathy. Perfect example, this was in late October, when we had a new family move into our district. The family that moved into the district had a new seventh grade student. On the boy's first day at RMS during lunch, I greeted the new student like we always do our new students, just to make them feel welcome, to make sure they have somebody to sit with. And as I'm looking around, trying to find somebody, and just kinda teaching him about our school and seeing if he knows a familiar face, all of a sudden, out of nowhere, Brayden comes up and introduces himself to the students and says, "Aren't you the new student?" And he's, and the young man said, "Yeah." He said, "Why don't you come sit with me and my friends?" And I didn't have to find anybody, because this young man took the bull by the horns and put, did a selfless act and put somebody else before him. What a selfless act that Brayden showed to reach out to a new student and make them feel welcome. We all want our students to act this way, because we say something at the middle school each and every day that being nice matters. It's in our announcements. And Brayden symbolizes that, that being nice does matter. I'll tell you this, the Esplin family has so much to be proud of. I wanna say thank you to Brayden for who you are becoming and for being a leader at RMS. And I can't wait to see what you have to do in eighth grade, cuz I know you're gonna be a leader with our eighth grade students as well. And Mr. White and I can also agree, he's got the best head of hair at the middle school. Thank you, Brayden. Let's go up here and get our picture taken.
I love it. Good job. Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Ferris from a high school. Thank you.
Hey, great. Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so I'd like to start with our recognition from last month, from the, from the canceled board meeting. We have, uh, to my left, senior Neha Yadavali. Uh, she definitely engages with a purpose. She takes rigorous AP course load. She's involved in National Honor Society, Mock Trial, Model UN, and Key Club. But the reason I'm recognizing her today is I got an email from her school counselor, Mrs. Long. And Mrs. Long talked about, during her senior check, she learned something about Neha and wanted to share it with me. And she said that this young lady had started her own website. She was co-creator of the website, and she's currently serving as the editor-in-chief of a website called Conversatio. And just knowing Neha and the amazing kid she is, I just wanna read a little bit from her introduction about what the website is to do. She says, "We share our perspectives openly and honestly with a willingness to listen and learn from each other. Together, we can break down barriers that divide us and build a brighter future for all, while upholding journalistic integrity, which our communities, our country, and our world need." So this website is definitely a platform for young people and people of all ages to learn about each other, learn about different cultures, and share ideas. And I think that that is pretty amazing, and we wanna definitely recognize her today. So, thank you, Neha. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Burke to join me. Mrs. Burke, for those of you that don't know, she is our CVCC liaison to the Board of Education here and a pretty amazing revered parent. And I get to call her friend, too, so I feel honored to do that. We couldn't be prouder of our next three students. They have demonstrated a learner's mindset, engaged with purpose, and they are upholding the vision of a Minuteman out in our community, our, our career ed school, Cog Hoggle Valley Career Center. And these, these three students were nominated as student recognition, student connection, basically our Student of the Month. They're there doing great things for the months of October, December, and January. So first up, we have Caroline Wilson. Caroline is a junior, and she's involved in the Sports Medicine Exercise Science Program at CVCC. That is one of the most difficult programs to get into, by the way. She, it says here, "A lifelong sports enthusiast. Caroline viewed the program as an opportunity to explore a potential career in the field and see if it was the right path for her." This is what her teacher says about Caroline. Caroline shows up every day with a smile. She has a real interest in exercise science and works hard. She is also a talented varsity cross-country and track athlete who treats everyone with respect and communicates well. Well, I wanna tell that teacher that we see the exact same thing here at the halls of Revere High School. She is definitely a bright spot in my day with that brilliant smile of hers, and I just can't thank her enough for being amazing at both places. So, thank you, Caroline. Our next student is James Mitter. James, I could not be more proud of you standing here in this moment, honestly. James, uh, James and I might have had a round or two as assistant principal, but all good things come out of that. He certainly has earned my respect, and we talked a lot about that. He is a very, he's a man, a young man, about to be a man, you are a man, that is graduating with, with a plan. And this is a perfect example of how our partnership at CVCC helps support our students. And James is involved over there at the Power Equipment Technology Program. And, um, he works as, he currently, he's on job placement now, his second semester of senior year. So he currently works as a forklift technician at Fallsway Equipment Company. And, uh, it's one of the new employers that has come on with CVCC. James intends to graduate and become a heavy diesel mechanic. And I like James' quote here. I'm gonna leave out the first part, cuz it says he doesn't like school, but the second part, I guess I didn't leave it out. The second part, he says, "You're a step ahead of everyone when you graduate from CVCC." And as a parent of a kid who participated in career ed, I could not agree with that statement more. James, I'm incredibly proud of you. You are the heck of a young man. I cannot wait to hand you your diploma, not because I wanna see you go, but because I know that you're gonna go on and do great things in, in your life and your career. So, one quick story. I went to James' second period class. I said, "James, you're being recognized at the Board of Education meeting." He said, "Ferris, I'm gonna have to show up dirty." He's like, "I'm gonna come straight from work, and I'm gonna be dirty." I said, "James, you show up dirty. That's fine with me." But he cleans up well. So, James, thank you very much. And certainly, uh, Savin, one of the best that we have to offer for last. This is, uh, junior Sophia Rashert. Uh, Sophia is a junior. She's, uh, in the graphing, graphic imaging technology program at CVCC. With a love of art and hands-on work, she felt that the program would be a good fit for her to help figure out the right career, uh, direction. And, um, Sophia has helped print the adult education catalogs for CVCC and is currently assisting with a book project, specifically working on the glossary, which may not be the most exciting thing, but, uh, you're certainly doing it well. And similar to Caroline and even James, um, Sophia is one of those students that every day you get to see her and interact with her. She's, um, always goes out of her way to say hi to staff and make them feel like, um, like just the most important person in the room. And I can't thank Sophia enough for the young lady that she is here at Revere High School and over at CVCC, representing herself, her family, and Revere High School. So, thank, thank you, Sophia.
All right, let's get a picture. Mrs. Burke, you too.
Nice job.
Good job, everybody. Congratulations. Caroline, you're so grown up now. My gosh, you're so cute. You don't even need a cue. They just go. You too. I'll see you soon. Next, next week, perhaps, maybe. Yes. Happy to be here all day with you. Okay. He was there. That's his job. He actually fell asleep and didn't watch.
And I mean, did she like that stuff?
Yeah.
It's a motorhead.
Yeah, you're...
There were so many delays. It's not the same if you're there.
I mean, when he's married...
Why do you have fifty? Why do you have like fifty of those? Ah, okay.
If you had fifty of Ted and you didn't go there, you would have a problem. I keep buying their sweatshirts. When you go on a college visit, you buy a sweatshirt. I told him he can do that for his daughter, whether she goes there or not, and buy a sweatshirt. Or a t-shirt. You do. When you take your daughter on a college visit... Because it's in the donate pile. I was like, "We're donating that already?" Oh, okay. Sorry. I mean, we did the same thing.
All right. We're gonna carry on here. Next on the agenda is public speaks to agenda items. If anybody wants to come talk to agenda items. All right, uh, Mr. Berdine is not here this evening, so Mrs. Arbogast, you are filling in him. Is that correct?
You bet.
All right. She and I planned ahead of time.
We did. We, we practiced this, so you want me to go ahead and just, we'll take it? Are you doing it?
No, I can, I'm fine. We can stick with what we practiced. We'll stay on schedule. Really, we just said we would do, recommend that we take four A through F as consent agenda. How about six A through F? Yes, that's what I meant, six A through F. Thank you.
Motion.
I'll second. All right, then we just have the approval of the minutes. There are the first two, and then the 2026 tax rate resolution is attachment T3. And then our asset deletions, things we're getting rid of. And then, uh, purchase orders, attachment T5, and then F is an anonymous donation. Okay. Uh, are there any questions for Mr. White slash Mrs. Arbogast?
I should have each had a question for you today. That would've gotten well.
And we obviously thank the anonymous donor for their donor, or donation. Given there's no other questions, you wanna call the roll, please?
Yes. So, Mr. Hidu, did you do the first on that one?
I think I did.
No.
Caution.
Miss Brackett did.
So, Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Hidu?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie, thank you very much. Uh, there's no items for the Revere Board of Education agenda. Mrs. Burke, do you have anything further? Okay.
So, uh, during, I mentioned at the last meeting that Career Technical Education Week was the first week in February. And also that week, Superintendent Mangus and the student ambassadors from CVCC traveled down to Columbus to visit with state legislators. And, um, he made a point of calling out in the email to the board that week that Alexis Miller, who is a student at Revere, um, did a great job speaking to, um, the work education that she's getting at Regina Health as part of her health services career. So it, as I think Mr. Conley mentioned earlier, it is not easy to get up as a teenager and speak to adults that way, but we were well represented by Alexis. Um, I also, hold on, I have to read my notes. Oh, yes, I also know that, uh, Mr. Mangus met with Mr. White this week to talk about the middle school programming that I had also mentioned at the last board meeting, which is just bringing them up to speed in terms of curriculum and so forth to, uh, comply with legislation about providing career tech ed at the middle school level. Um, and then finally, I just wanna thank Mr. White, Mrs. Arbogast, Mr. Ferris for going out of their way and planning to recognize those students today. I, I just think that's wonderful. And I have, like, connections with almost all three students, so it was just really special to see them recognized. And Mrs. Brackett, thank you very much for the idea. I really appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. White? Superintendent's agenda. Yeah. So I'd recommend one A through C as a consent. Okay, so moved.
Second.
All right, salary increases at letter A there for those four members of further their education. And B, we have supplemental contracts for spring sports coming up. And a list there for you. And then some non-athletic supplemental contracts there for bus duty at C. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Mrs. Arbogast?
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mr. Hidu?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
All right, and then I'd also recommend two A through F as consent? Uh, so moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a resignation for retirement purposes there. At A for Leslie Austin, and B, we have change of positions for Catherine Rundo. A new hire for us at the intensive needs educational aid, Christie Broadwater, Bradwater. And then bus drivers in training at B, uh, D, rather. And E, we have more supplemental contracts for spring sports. Lastly, F, we have our student auditorium workers as well. Any questions on any of those? Mrs. Arbogast?
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Hidu?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, number three, uh, letter A, we just have a student in need of home instruction. Uh, so moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
No.
No.
Uh, Mrs. Arbogast?
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Hidu?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
All right. Recommend four A through four D as a consent.
Did you say four A through four D?
Correct. Correct.
Motion.
Second.
All right, A there, we have a MOU for CCP with Akron, and then we have an out-of-state field trip for our high school music program to Orlando, Florida in January 2026 at B. Letter C is the annual membership for the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and D is a CCP MOU with Stark State College, uh, for College Credit Plus. Any questions?
Is the band marching at, uh, Disney World? Is that what they're doing?
I would imagine that's what they've done, yeah, I would imagine. They've done that before, but the, generally the band marches, then the choir performs somewhere on property too.
Yeah.
I don't think the choir is included in this though, I didn't see that on the
No.
Proposal.
Trying to remember, because we
Oh, really? Because I was curious why it didn't say choir too, but.
Oh, because I just saw music programs, I assumed it was both.
Maybe I'm wrong.
It's very possible.
We should ask.
I could get clarification for you on that and make sure, yeah.
Don't want to leave anybody out.
No.
I'm sure, I'm sure if they're supposed to go, they'd want to go.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Arbogast.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Hydo?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Okay, four E was the first read for our student handbooks.
Okay, there's no action there.
Correct. And then four F and G, can we do as a consent?
Is that a motion?
Oh.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Sorry about that.
And these are just MOUs for CCP, Kent State University, and then we have Cuyahoga Community College Credit Plus as well for those two.
Are there any questions for Ms. White? Okay, Mrs. Arbogast?
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Hydo?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Okay, four H is our first reading for Introduction to Personal Finance, and then four I is first reading for the Honors High School Music Ensemble Proposal, and we had presentations at the board work session last week about both of these, these are first reads.
Yeah, it was a pretty extensive, uh, presentation.
That was very good.
Are there any questions on the, uh, those two first reads? Okay, um, for informational items, uh, the March Work Session will be held Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, beginning at, uh, 5:30 in the Revere Administration Building Conference Room. Uh, the regular meeting, uh, will be held Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, beginning at 5:30 here in the High School Media Center. Uh, now we do open it up, uh, for concerns of the public and community announcements, so if anybody has, by all means, come forward. Hello?
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Good. Good evening to the board, Mr. White, Mrs. Arbogast. My name is Lauren Shear and I'm the proud mom of two boys in the district and a member of Akron Jewish Community. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the administration, Mrs. Roach, the eighth grade ELA team, Mr. Connolly, Dr. Oberhauser, and Mrs. Studdard for their unwavering dedication to our students' growth. The inclusion of the U.S. Holocaust Museum in the eighth grade Washington DC trip starting in 2026, along with the integration of the text All But My Life to enhance the current Holocaust curriculum into the eighth grade ELA program, exemplifies a commitment to fostering empathy and a learner's mindset among our children. At a time when antisemitism is on the rise, providing students with the opportunity to engage this history firsthand is more important than ever. Visiting the Holocaust Museum will help them connect with the real stories of those who suffered, deepening their understanding of the dangers of hatred and the importance of standing up against injustice. This effort reflects the collaborative spirit of our administration and teachers who recognize the profound impact such experiences have in shaping well-rounded students. I deeply appreciate your efforts to provide educational opportunities that challenge our students to engage with purpose and communicate truth aligning with the core values of a minute, vision of a Minuteman. These lessons will not only teach history, but will inspire our children to become thoughtful, empathetic, compassionate leaders in an increasingly complex world. Thank you for your leadership and for prioritizing these transformative experiences for our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, we do have, uh, on our agenda, an executive session, however, there is, uh, no need to go into executive sessions, so we will not have that tonight. So may I have a motion, uh, to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Arbogast?
Mrs. Brackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey?
Yes.
Mr. Hydo?
Yes.
Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Jeez, Mrs. Stein?
Thank you, we're adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.